Can you all hear me? Now you can.
Yes.
All right. I'm calling to order this City Council meeting of March 3, 2020. Tara, would you please call the roll?
King.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
Luttrell.
Here.
Turner.
Here.
Fire Robin.
Here. So I want to welcome everyone here tonight and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Your interest in our city government is appreciated. And I think the weather has kind of led us to be a little lower key this evening. Also, I will say we have several guests who are here. And I wanted to thank particularly the Tennessee High students who are here not as a class assignment, but because they came before and are interested in our city government. So when we say your interest in city government is appreciated, tonight, we're particularly thanking you all for that. There are a number of opportunities to speak on matters of city business. A sheet explaining those opportunities is available as you enter the room. We'll note each time as we go forward when public comment is welcome. Also, a sign up sheet was provided for anybody who wishes to address council during the appearance of our citizens section of our agenda. So tonight, for our invocation and pledge, Sam Weddington, who is pastor at First Presbyterian Church and who I have been working with on some King environmental efforts and appreciate his leadership in our community, is going to lead us in our invocation. And following that, City Council member Chad King is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
Let us pray. Eternal God, I pray that you bless us this evening and keep us. Lord, make your face shine upon us and be gracious to us. I pray that we feel your presence during this meeting because you are with us wherever we go. I pray that this meeting focuses upon you and your plans for this community. Let our actions in this meeting be valuable to that aim, which is to build one another up. We also take time this evening to pray for our nation and the world as it is gripped in panic and fear of the unknown, of illness. We ask, oh Lord, for peace, healing in our land, in our world, and that you would be with those who suffer this evening. We pray this in your most mighty name. Amen.
Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, I'll note that I intended, prior to the invocation, to make note of the disaster in middle Tennessee and in Nashville, that our hearts and prayers are with folks there also. And I'll speak a little bit at the end about the coronavirus and a lot, not only what it's doing, but people who are quite fearful of what can happen, and that's affecting lives already. So as we reflect on the invocation, would ask us to remember those folks, too. Okay, Mr. Sore, do you have any additional agenda?
No, Mayor, the agenda is complete.
Thank you very much. We have three proclamations this evening. And the first one is Multiple Sclerosis Education Awareness Month. And we have Ms. Sharon Cross, who is here tonight. She's group leader of the Mountain Empire Multiple Sclerosis Support Group in Bristol. And so she's here, and she'll talk to us in a few minutes about some of the educational activities. And I'm pleased to read that proclamation. Whereas multiple sclerosis, MS, is a chronic incurable progressive disease of the central nervous system that affects approximately 400,000 people in the United States. And whereas it typically strikes young people in the prime of their life, in their twenties to forties, women are more likely to have MS by about three to one, and symptoms can begin as simply as tingling and over time progress to near paralysis. And whereas March of 2020 is Multiple Sclerosis Education Awareness Month, and is important to allow for better education and awareness of MS so that its victims can lead more productive and satisfying lives to benefit themselves, their caregivers and families, and the overall community. And whereas the exact cause of MS is still unknown, and there is no known cure. And whereas the symptoms of MS may be mild, such as numbness in the limbs, or severe, such as paralysis or loss of vision. And whereas MS is a disease that not only affects the person with the condition, but also greatly impacts family, friends, and the community. And whereas every hour of every day, someone is newly diagnosed with MS. And whereas the Mountain Empire Multiple Sclerosis Support Group of Bristol and the Multiple Sclerosis Alliance of Virginia, MS AV, provide programs and services for anyone in the area whose life has been affected by MS. Now let it be resolved that the mayor of the city of Bristol, Tennessee, does hereby proclaim this month of March 2020 as Multiple Sclerosis Education Awareness Month, and calls this observance to the attention of all citizens in order to increase awareness and understanding of this disease this third day of March 2020.
We would like to thank the entire council. I am the group leader for the local support group, but I'm also on the board of the MS Alliance of Virginia. Plus, we affiliate with the MS Society, the MS Foundation, and the MS Association of America. We are all trying to gain recognition and understanding that this is a disease you don't see. We're not all in wheelchairs. We're not all using canes. It can affect cognitive issues, which you're not going to see out here unless you deal with us day to day. It affects speech, hearing, eyesight, so many things that so many people don't see. Our meetings are set up to have fun. We play games. We talk. We want to support people that have this disease. For everybody in this area, we thank you all so much for this recognition. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you'll wait a minute, I'll come and sign it in a second. I failed to sign it. But we'll get started on the Public Procurement Month. A proclamation designating March 2020 as Public Procurement Month. I'm having difficulty this evening with big words. In Tennessee, and Councilwoman Lee Powers is going to read the proclamation, and we're glad to have April Norris, our purchasing agent, with us this evening to accept the proclamation. So if you'll go.
And thank you to Councilman King for letting me borrow his glasses. Okay. Whereas professional public procurement is crucial for the efficient and effective operation of all governments across the state of Tennessee. The state of Tennessee has public procurement professionals at the state, county, city, collegiate, public school, utility board, public housing authority, public airport, public hospital, and other quasi-governmental levels. And whereas public procurement professionals in the city of Bristol and other public organizations have tremendous influence on the economic conditions in the United States, with the cumulative purchasing power running into the billions of dollars, these public procurement professionals dedicate themselves to providing the best value for every taxpayer dollar. They provide high caliber strategic, logistical, and operational support for agencies, and they dedicate themselves to expanding their knowledge, skills, and abilities for the public good. This is especially true of our procurement officer. Whereas in addition to the purchase of goods and services, public procurement adds value to the organization by performing such functions as executing, implementing, and administering contracts, developing strategic procurement strategies, and cultivating working relationships with suppliers and other departments within the organization. And the Department of Administration's Purchasing Division, through its members, is committed to providing high caliber strategic, logistical, and operational support of all departments within the city of Bristol. Whereas the Purchasing Division recognizes, supports, and practices the public procurement values and guiding principles of accountability, ethics, impartiality, professionalism, service, and transparency, established by the National Institute of Governmental Purchasing, the NIGP. As fundamental tenants of the public procurement profession, NIGP has designated this month, the month of March, as Public Procurement Month, to further expand the awareness of the purchasing professional's role to governmental officials, the general public, business, and corporate leaders. Now therefore, the mayor of the city of Bristol, Tennessee, Margaret Fire Robin, does hereby proclaim March 2020 as Public Procurement Month in the city of Bristol, Tennessee, and urges all citizens to recognize the role of the purchasing and materials management profession within business, industry, and government. This is the third day of March 2020. And just as a side note, I've known April for many, many years now, and I know her talents. And she does an outstanding job on behalf of the city of Bristol, Tennessee. So congratulations.
It is an honor to get to serve the city in this capacity, and I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you all so much.
So frequently, we do joint proclamations with our sister city, and we're pleased to, tonight, welcome Lieutenant John J. Stevens, the fourth of the United States Navy Office of Community Outreach. And I had the honor of hearing him talk at our Chamber of Commerce meeting about the Navy Week that's March 30 through April 5, and lots of different activities coming up. So appreciate the attention that our community is getting with this designation. And Vice Mayor Malin Luttrell is going to read that proclamation.
Thank you. Whereas the cities of Bristol, Tennessee, and Bristol, Virginia are honored to have the presence of the United States Navy in our community. And whereas the state of Tennessee is home for more than 5,500 active Navy, active duty enlisted sailors, 1,000 active duty naval officers, more than 1,200 Navy reservists, and more than 12,000 active duty and reserve retirees. And whereas the United States Navy is instrumental in ensuring the safety and security of $32.7 billion in annual exports from the state of Tennessee. And whereas the citizens of Bristol take pride in supporting our namesake submarines, USS Tennessee and USS Greenville. And whereas the inaugural Tri-Cities Navy Week hosts special events and programs in the tri-cities to increase the community's knowledge and understanding of their Navy and its global mission. And whereas the Navy Week includes several public events, including free concerts by Navy Band Southeast. And whereas Navy Week will culminate with multiple units supporting Spring Race Week at the Bristol Motor Speedway. Now therefore, we, Margaret Fire Robin and Neil Osburn, the mayors of Bristol, Tennessee, Bristol, Virginia, hereby proclaim March 30 through April 5, 2020, as United States Navy Week in the cities of Bristol, Tennessee, and Bristol, Virginia, and encourage all citizens to support the military.
Thank you very much. It is Tri-Cities Navy Week, but let's be honest, this Navy Week is anchored in Bristol with the Spring Bristol Race. It's our first ever NASCAR race that we're leveraging in a 15-year-old now program. So we're very excited about the inaugural Tri-Cities Navy Week, and just can't express our gratitude for all the communities of the tri-cities, and especially Bristol, just opening your arms to us. More than that, this is really personally special for me. It's my last Navy Week before I move on to another job thousands of miles away. And I'm from here. I'm an ETSU graduate. My wonderful wife, Amy, is a Bristol native, born and raised, and a Tennessee High graduate. And my wonderful parents-in-law, Ron and Mary Johnson, call Bristol home. So it really means a lot to be able to bring the Navy that I love back to a community that I love. And I thank all of you for helping us make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I know different partners in the community are really pleased to be working together on this. We have a presentation tonight on our Census 2020 update. We have been trying to do that regularly. We appreciate Mr. Kevin Flannery, partnership specialist with U.S. State Census, who has been so generous with his time to be here with us and also to serve with us and help lead our Census Committee. As Bristol counts, we count people because people count. So we appreciate everything you do, and it's countdown. We're almost there.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Mayor, council members, for having me. Major Sore, good to see you again. Yeah, we are nine days away to find out how Bristol can get their share of $675 billion that's going to be dispersed annually. I've talked about that in the past, and I'll give a real quick refresher on that. Every 10 years, we have a decennial census, which counts everybody in the United States based on participation with that. That's how we decide how much money goes to each district, each state. And it's over $675 billion in federal funding that's going to go out now. It's going to go somewhere. We want it to come here. And although I work for the Census Bureau, I live here. So I have another stake in this, that I really want this money to come back here for funding. I think we're going to do much better. We did well in 2010, and we can improve on it some, but we are leaving a lot of money on the table. And without going into all the details, unless you want me to talk about those as well, I know I mentioned them last time, we are leaving a lot of money on the table here. So it's very important. Has a lot to do with redistricting, where seats will end up lying. I can tell you this, that in 2010, there was changes, or there were changes that happened in several states. Ohio, North Carolina, some of them gained congressional seats, some lost. And it's all based on really census data. So our goal is to count everybody where they are and count them once. And I know it sounds simple, but it's not a simple process, I can assure you. It is simple as far as what people will be required to do to answer the census, and I'll touch on that in a second. But I'll give you a timeline. This is going to start March 12. Everyone in the United States, within a few days after that, is going to receive a postcard in the mail, and it's going to be from the U.S. Census Bureau. So for the first time ever, the census is going to be offered online, by phone, or paper copy. If you like to do it online, which we are hoping a lot of people do, although you don't have to, let me clarify, you do not have to do it online. But we do anticipate a lot of people will do that, since this is the first time we went with that method. You can do it immediately, although the official census date is April 1, because the federal government's got, we've got jokes, we like to do that on April Fool's Day. You can do this before that. So let's say you go to your mailbox, you get a postcard, it's got a link, you get it on March 14 to 15. If you go in, get on your computer, you can do it on your smartphone, nine questions, 10 minutes, you're done. That also assures nobody ever comes to your door. Because I know when people think about the Census Bureau, they think about people knocking on the door and stuff. That will happen. That's usually follow-up enumeration for people who hadn't responded one of those other three ways. We're really hoping to minimize that. In the event that we do have to do a lot of that, I can tell you that Sullivan County has, and we do this as county, so Bristol's going to fall within that, Sullivan County has reached their goal on recruiting as far as census requirements. We don't usually talk about the exact numbers, but I can tell you that the numbers for Sullivan County that the Census Bureau hoped for was 1,274 applicants. Now that doesn't mean everybody will be hired. They just want a strong applicant pool. And I can tell you right now, there are over 1,200 applicants. And they like when they get to 80%. They consider that they've got a good quality applicant pool if they need to. So I really think this county's going to go 100%. One good thing was they raised the salary, as we know. So if you go from $1,350 to $19 an hour, that is a big chunk right there, incentive, and it seems to have worked, so.
We also had a job fair at our library that attracted quite a few people. We're real proud of that partnership, and different folks from the committee who worked volunteered to help out that day.
Exactly. And we appreciate that because the mayor heads up our Complete Count Committee for Bristol, and they've been, it's all what you want to make it, really. We don't mandate anything that you have to do. We're there to guide or give some suggestions sometimes, but really, it's about increasing awareness about the census and reaching out to encourage participation. So yeah, some of the events you all have done, like the recruiting one that was over at the library, and we did that jointly. I know we had some recruiters came from Virginia's side as well. It went really well, and that helped, those things promoting it like that, that helped a lot.
Also, we thank our staff for applying for grant dollars that were made available in the state of Tennessee, and for marketing and for getting the word out. So appreciate the time that it takes for that to be done. So thank you.
I have a quick question. You know, when everybody gets their card, the link is the same. Is there like a number that you will use with that link to make it individual?
Yes, everybody will have a different one. There are options on there, because you know, you could lose it or whatever, and then, you know, what type of organization would be to say, oh, well, you can't do it now? No, we want you to do it. So there will be other options that you go online and do it with other information you could log in with. You will receive three to four mailers. Even if you get the first one, you might get some more, but just go ahead and knock it out. I mean, the money that it brings back here is incredible. I can tell you, for the state of Tennessee, gets about $17.3 billion a year on average back in federal funding. And when I say get that back, I do not ever say the federal government gives that to us. That's money that was paid by taxpayers. So if we get that much back, and you know, we can't phantom that, well, maybe some of y'all can't phantom it personally, but $17.3 billion is a lot of money. But when you see it broken down as to which departments actually get it, whether it's the $110 million a year that goes to school breakfast program in Tennessee, the $222 million that goes to school lunch programs, WIC, healthcare, Medicaid, student Pell Grants, loans, SNAP benefits, it's just, it's phenomenal to see how that money is used when it comes in. So very important. One thing you had mentioned was the grant. I know Virginia has one available as well. I don't know all the details on theirs, but as far as Tennessee, we have a Tennessee State Complete Count Committee down in Nashville, and they had offered $250,000 in grant funding that could go out to assist with local marketing or events that you would want to do with your count committees. Not mandatory, not mandatory to apply for it. Those were going to range anywhere from $1,000 to $10,000 max. I can tell you that Bristol did a very good job on theirs. I can say that much. I can say they did an excellent job, and they're going to announce the amounts next week. But it's fair to say you all are going to get a amount on that. Now, do we propose committees having to use their own money for anything like that? No, absolutely not. It's not part of the Census Bureau. We do not do that. You are all going to see, and you may have already seen some commercials, you're going to see a lot more of them over the next month or so, on television, radio, social media. There is a huge federal marketing campaign going out to release information about the census. But what we do like to see is when local committees, such as yours, does something on their own and kind of spins it, you know, to their home, to their home crowd, really, and really get people participate. So really, if you all know anybody that doesn't know anything about the census, you can go on census.gov. We've got plenty of flyers, information, but it's 10 minutes. It's a simple process. So do you all have questions?
Thank you so much for everything you've done to help promote the census here in our community.
We're still, did you get that scheduled or about?
Now we will.
Press conference. Sorry. Because I think April 1, we're planning a press conference that we're going to do. And I'll tell you all, I will show a little bias. I made sure that you all got me on that early, because I know on April 1, I got a feeling that a lot of the counties around here are going to want me to be at their events for that. But yeah, I don't recall. Nine or 9:30, we'll get that detail out to our council members to be able to come if they can, April 1, which is the first big census. I think you got a short video. Thank you for having us. Appreciate it.
Now we will take you on a quick tour of the Internet questionnaire. Step-by-step instructions will be provided later in the video. When you visit my2020census.gov, you will log in using the census ID from the materials that were mailed to you or left at your door. We will ask you to confirm your address and provide your name and phone number. Next, we will ask you to count how many people will be living or staying at this address on April 1, 2020, and list the name of each person who will be living or staying at your address. We will also remind you to include people that might have been missed. We will ask whether the home is owned or rented, and who owns or rents the home. We will ask each person about their sex, date of birth and age, Hispanic, Latino, or Spanish origin, and race. When there is more than one person at an address, we will ask how they are related to the reference person. Finally, we will ask whether anyone sometimes stays at another address. Finally, we will ask whether anyone sometimes stays at another address.
Thank you very much. All right, next, we have a couple of public hearings on the agenda tonight, and both are associated with owner-initiated requests for property annexation. And from my understanding is legally, we have to take these as separate issues so that we make sure that we do our due diligence. So Mr. Sora, if you'll summarize the first one for us.
Yes, this is our first venture since the General Assembly changed how property is annexed into the corporate limits, and that was probably done four years ago. This is an annexation by request. The, the property is owned by Mr. Tony Boyd, that's located at 1003 Highway 126. He desires to use the property for commercial development and desires the extension of city services to accommodate that goal. Property contains approximately 5.25 acres. It's located approximately 180 feet southwest of the existing corporate limits along Highway 126. The annexation will include approximately 434 feet of Highway 126, which is currently maintained by the Tennessee Department of Transportation. Upon annexation, the city will assume the maintenance responsibility for this portion of the highway. However, we will be eligible to recover our costs through a state maintenance agreement that we have for other state routes located within our, our city limits. The annexation will also include the extension of the sanitary sewer service, which is certainly an integral part of the development of the property. We'll perform this using an in-house construction crews. Material cost is estimated to be approximately $1,000. We have two public hearings. One is on the annexation, one is on the plan of services, and I'm really addressing somewhat both of them. And Sheriff will come to the, to the microphone momentarily and, and further detail this issue. But last month, you approved two resolutions that triggered this. These were resolutions that announced the intent to annex and resolution that, that announced the intent to issue the plan of services. Later in our agenda, we will formally consider these two resolutions. If they are approved, then in, under the ordinance section of our resolution, you'll have first reading of the rezoning of the property. So with that, Sheriff, would you come forward and, and I, I would assume remain, we'll, we'll need to do these separately. So just remain at the podium if you'll cover the annexation first and then the plan of services second.
Sure. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I'll, I'll show a map here. The introductory slide covered a great deal of the information that's pertinent to this annexation. But the map on the screen shows the property, Mr. Boyd's parcel that he's requesting the annexation for in blue, and then the strip of Highway 126 that will also be annexed as the second parcel in green. So you can see the proximity of the requested annexation to the city limits now. We have gone through the proper process as far as advertising, public notices, signs on the property for this annexation. From a public response, I've had two calls and they were just really people right around that area. One curious about what was going on, and then the other, just making sure that they weren't included as part of the annexation, just making sure they understood what exactly was going to be annexed. So the, the public feedback has been fairly minimal, but we have done everything we're supposed to as far as public notices and advertising. The Planning Commission did review this during their meeting on January 13th and did recommend approval for the plan of services for this annexation.
Anybody have any questions for staff? Great, we'll open the public hearing on this issue. Is there anyone here that would like to address this issue? Seeing no one, we'll close this public hearing and if we can learn about plan of services, we'll open that one.
Okay, thank you. So again, with the annexation, part of the annexation process is to review and adopt a plan of services for the annexed property. I'm going to show, and we've looked at these slides a couple of times, so I'm going to skip to a summary slide and then can flip back if you all have any questions about the plan of services here. But essentially, we'll have several services as part of this plan of services that will be effective immediately if this property is annexed. The things that are effective immediately include police and fire service, refuse collection, access to city recreational facilities and programs, access to city schools, planning, zoning, code, CDBG services, water service is currently through the Blountville Utility District and there's no change proposed there. And then electric service through BTEES, of course, no change there. And then effective immediately will be street maintenance of Highway 126. There are two short-term, what we would term short-term services. Additional, an additional street light will be added along Highway 126, and that work will be in coordination with BTEES. And then the extension of public sanitary service within one year of the annexation date. If annexed, this property will be in the West Council District and the West School District. And then the zoning, as we'll talk a little bit more in a minute with the first reading of the zoning ordinance. It's proposed to be B3, which is the city's general business district. And that B3 district is consistent with what is on Highway 126 now and also consistent with the city's future land use map.
Anyone have any other questions for staff? If not, I will open the public hearing for the plan of services. Is there anyone here this evening wishing to address council on this issue? Seeing no one, we'll close our public hearing and we'll come back to vote on this in just a few minutes. Thank you very much. Next, we have appearance of citizens. It's for the public to address city council on any matter that's not on our printed agenda. Comments are limited to matters of city business only, and usually, a response isn't made at this time because we're not prepared effectively to answer concerns. The city manager would look into the matter, report back to city council, or as appropriate, have staff meet with individuals to, in an effort to satisfy concerns. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual, non-transferable, and groups are encouraged to have a spokesperson. We put out a list of folks to speak tonight, no one signed up. So we have nobody who signed up, but we always ask if there's anybody who is here who would wish to address council on any matters that are not on the agenda. And seeing none, we will move on. We do not have any appointments to boards or commissions. So we have our ordinances and resolutions, and we have the two resolutions that we just heard associated with the annexation request. We had presentations of those. So Resolution 2015, approving the annexation request for the property at 1003 Highway 126. Is there a motion to take action?
Motion to approve Resolution 2015 to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the city of Bristol, Tennessee.
Is there a second?
Second.
And I think we had a question opportunity. Does anybody want to discuss this resolution or add anything? Seeing none, then I think we're ready to vote. King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Next, we have Resolution 2016, approving the annexation plan for the property. We've had this summarization and a public hearing. Is there a motion to take action?
Motion, you go ahead. Oh, let's.
Motion to approve Resolution 2016. The resolution will be adopting the plan of services related to the annexation of territory into the city of Bristol by the owner consent.
I'll second.
All right, motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Okay, we have three ordinances for consideration on first reading. Mr. Sora?
Yes, Mayor, the first item, Ordinance 20-3, was brought before this board on February the 4th. And it did not read, did not receive a motion or a second, so it, but it was referred back, I guess unofficially, to the Planning Commission for questions. There was concern regarding the aesthetics of, of an all-digital environment, especially along major corridors where our billboards or outdoor advertising structures are located. There was also a question regarding the number of billboards that we have within our community. And then lastly, there was a desire to contrast the ordinances governing billboards in our surrounding communities. There was a request that this go back for discussion with the Planning Commission. Ms. Young is with us this evening. She can answer those three questions as well as the Planning Commission's recommendation based on, on their further review of this matter.
Sure. Thank you. As Mr. Sora stated, the city council, the last city council meeting, there were a few questions that came up and we were asked to take a deeper dive into a couple of pieces of information. So we did find that, and the list is included in your packet of information, but there are 45 billboards within the city limits. We looked at what the surrounding communities of Bristol, Virginia, Sullivan County, and Kingsport, Johnson City do in terms of allowing digital media on their billboards. Bristol, Virginia, Sullivan County, and Kingsport do not allow digital displays. Johnson City does in a limited capacity on signs that are not permitted by the state, so signs that are off the state and federal routes there. But they do have a minimal amount, and it's about 62 square feet, that they would allow for an electronic display. You do see some in Johnson City that are permitted by TDOT that are full billboard display, but those are signs that are permitted by TDOT in Johnson City. We did actually, the list that's included in your packet, we did map those. So these little red dots show the location of billboards within the city limits. The circle that surrounds them indicates the 2,000-foot radius, which if you recall from what our existing ordinance says, an electronic billboard or display has to be 2,000 feet away from another digital display. So if you look at some of those areas where there's a kind of a big group, several of those circles all together, once one person would put that digital display up, everybody outside of, or everybody inside of 2,000 feet wouldn't be allowed to go with a digital or electronic message board. So those are the signs that are existing in the city now. And if this ordinance were to go forward, these would be the signs that you would have with the new ordinance, the new location of billboards would be prohibited. So this would be what you would have in terms of billboards in the city in the future. So the proposed amendment is here in front of you on the screen or above you on the screen. The proposal includes one definition to Section 203 of the zoning ordinance, and that is to add a definition for the term net, which is a unit to measure, better measure luminosity for these type signs. We also would like to revise the section, sorry, I can't, it's 215 in the zoning ordinance that, that would govern outdoor advertising structures or billboards. And we would say that a billboard, new billboards are prohibited, so billboards are prohibited in the city, but existing billboards can be maintained and then can be replaced with those electronic message boards with certain stipulations. So I have this section, this is the new proposal, and then I have a red line section, which I know is very hard to see, but that is included in your packet. And that removes all those location parameters that exist in our ordinance now and then removes the 2,000-foot separation of electronic display. We did go back to the Planning Commission with the city council concerns and the city council, the research that we've provided here. And they, the Planning Commission did review this and had some discussion over it and essentially confirmed their decision from the prior meeting. So the, the vote was to confirm their previous decision and to send the recommendation forward to you all to amend Section 203 and Section 216 of the zoning ordinance as proposed tonight.
Does council have questions for staff? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion we approve as stated.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great. Is there a discussion? I'll just say that some of the discussion on Planning Commission and I think that has a lot of validity is that when the original 2,000 feet was set, the digital technology was very different than it is today and that digital is the direction of where things are going. Also, there's a lot of research for how long things should stay up and how often it should change and what the lighting should be, et cetera, for not being as much of a distraction. So there's a, a lot, there's a big difference between now. Also, a feeling that it's not going to happen overnight, that everybody's going to go to a digital billboard because they are very expensive to do that. So, but providing folks with the opportunity over time to do it, what people felt like was important. Did that cover it pretty much?
Well, I just appreciate the Planning Commission. We send this back, and oftentimes, we send things back for clarification. And we, I appreciate, and I think the rest of council appreciates, the Planning Commission being open-minded as we send things back so that we have a clear understanding of exactly what it is we are voting on. So thank you.
And I think Planning Commission had good discussion and some discussion that we had not had the first time, so I think there is value to, to doing that. So, okay, is there anyone here tonight to address this issue? Seeing no one, I think we're ready for a vote. King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
All right, the next item on the agenda is Ordinance 20-4, amending the zoning map. No, I'm on the wrong page. Excuse me.
You're right.
Am I right? Okay, because it's a, okay, because it, okay, we're moving into those. Okay, thank you. Amending the zoning map, thank y'all. Designating property located, located at 1003 Highway 126 is B3 general business, and we've already had that summary. No, this is for the zoning. We have not had the zoning. We've had the other stuff. I am getting totally.
We're good.
All these yellow stuff looks, looks, yes.
Looks the same.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, all right. Mayor, as, as we mentioned earlier, with the two resolutions, that does trigger the necessity to, to establish a zoning designation. So Ordinance 20-4 does amend the city's zoning ordinance to address property located at 1003 Highway 126. The property is currently zoned by Sullivan County as B3 general business service district, which is very similar to the city's B3 general business district zone. The city's future land use plan does contemplate a business use for this property, and for these reasons, staff recommends the, the identical B3 zoning general business district for this property. Planning Commission considered this matter at the January 13th meeting and makes a recommendation by forwarding an unanimous recommendation to, to proceed with the, the B3 zoning. If it's approved on first reading this evening, then a public hearing and second reading will be slated for your April meeting.
Great, does anybody on council have a question for staff? Now, is there any, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve Ordinance 20-4 to amend the zoning map of Bristol, Tennessee by designating certain property as B3 general business, 1003 Highway 126.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience tonight like to address this issue? Seeing none, I think we're, any further discussion or anything by council? We're ready to vote. King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
All right, next, we have Ordinance 20-5, amending Section 216 of the zoning ordinance as it relates to electronic message boards, not to be confused with billboards. Mr. Sora, can you summarize that for us?
Yes, Mayor, and that, that's very accurate. While, while both, both ordinances amend Section 216, there are two different elements to this. This particular ordinance addresses electronic message boards. And as council has discussed on a couple of work session, during a couple of work sessions, the allowance of electronic message boards by, by government facilities or municipal facilities within residential districts or other business zones where they are previous or they're. or other business zones where they are previous or they're currently not permitted, and this would be the B2 Zone, which is our downtown, B1A, which is a less intensive business district, and then the B1B zoning districts, all of which currently restrict the less electronic message boards. The Planning Commission did approve the recommendations by council by a vote of sixty-two to forward a favorable recommendation. I am going to ask Ms. Young to detail the ordinance changes as city council discussed during, I guess, one or two work sessions ago regarding that. Once again, as similar to other ordinance, if it's approved on first reading this evening, we'll have a public hearing as well as second reading in April.
Thank you. So, just to summarize on the electronic message board changes here, one more time, the council discussed this at, I believe, two work sessions, and the summary that you all have tonight, the proposal that'll be in front of you tonight, really contains those items that council discussed. So, it allows electronic message boards in the expanded, I'm sorry, can you all hear me?
I think they turned it up.
Okay. So, it allows electronic message boards in residential districts, B1A, B1B, and B2, if the property is owned by the city or operated by the city. As you all requested, the eligible sites must be a minimum cumulative acreage of two acres. We put specific language to address automatic dimmers and luminosity, and then hours of operation. So, electronic message boards in these zones can only be operable between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. to better protect surrounding residential properties. So, the ordinance tonight, that's for your consideration for changes, there is one small change we'd like to make to the existing electronic message board section, and this applies to the business zones, and that is to add that definition or that parameter around nets as a measurement, which is just more technically appropriate for electronic message boards. So, that small change is in the existing electronic message board section of the ordinance, and then we would propose this new section, which includes all those changes directed by council and agreed to by the majority of the Planning Commission. So, this would be your B section of electronic message boards that would address the municipal-owned properties in the residential B2, B1A, B1B districts. And I'd be happy to go through any points of this, but it does include all those summary items. The Planning Commission did review this again at their last meeting and did recommend six-two to send a favorable recommendation forward to city council.
Great. Are there any questions for staff? Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve Ordinance 20-5.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? I'll just note, this one went from, well, Planning Commission didn't particularly want to consider it, I think, and council did, and when it went back to Planning Commission after further discussion, it was supported. So, talking stuff through can make a big difference. Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to address council on this issue? Seeing none, I think we're ready to, unless there's further discussion, we're ready to vote. King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin? Yes. All right, the next is Ordinance 20-2, authorizing the change of date for the municipal elections to coincide with November elections. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize?
Yes, Mayor, last month, city council approved on first reading Ordinance 20-2, and this affects the municipal election dates. The impetus of the conversation was the desire to increase voter turnout and reduce local costs of elections. The proposed ordinance will move the date of the municipal election from May in odd-numbered years to November in even-numbered years. This will affect not only city council, but it will also affect the Board of Education as well as the juvenile court judge and clerk. If change, if the change is approved on second reading this evening, it will impact the next election, if it's, that is scheduled is May 18th of 2021. This is a district election, so it'll be from the east, south, and west districts, involve candidates for those. It would move that election date from May 18th of 2021 to November 8th of 2022. The next, that large election of candidates then would shift from May of 2023 to May of 2024.
November of 2021.
Excuse me, November of 2024. As drafted, successful candidates will assume their office in January following the November elections.
Does council have any questions for staff? I had a question or understanding. So, we are able to do this because the state has passed provisions that we don't have to have a charter change.
That's correct.
I understand, though, that this does not change when we elect our mayor and vice mayor that's in our charter. So, this does not, we still will have to open our charter and go through that process to correct the charter.
At some point, I think it would, I think logistically, you would want to move your selection of mayor and vice mayor to the time the incoming officers take their oath of office. Again, that's, if that's, if you do approve this this evening, you've got ample time to do that, but that would, as we understand it, require a charter change, correct?
And the charter change requires us to send it to the legislature.
That is correct.
And probably, I don't think four votes are required to send it, but four votes are required to approve it when it comes back. So, our legislators want at least four to send to make sure it's worthwhile doing.
Yeah, that's correct.
So, we still have to anticipate going through that process regardless of the vote this evening. Any other questions or comments from our attorney, who's nodded through most of that?
Danielle, you're up.
You're good.
Do you have any comment?
Any further comments? Any other questions from staff? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve Ordinance 20-22 that will change election dates to November.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there a discussion?
I just think anytime we can get even more people to the polls to vote, it's to our advantage. You know, I hope everybody went and voted today in the primaries, and our vote is such a wonderful privilege that we have in this country that many other countries around the world don't have, and I think it's very important to encourage people to the polls.
And I'll just note that I voted against this first reading. I'm voting against it the second time because I feel like local election will get lost in the national elections in November, so I feel like having a separate election allows us to, for our community, to focus on our local issues. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to address council on this issue? Seeing none, I think we're ready to vote. King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin? No. All right, that brings us to our consent agenda, and are we all here for consent agenda?
I think so. I think there may be one item that could be pulled, so.
No, I'm asking if you're.
Yeah, I'll stay here for that.
We have somebody who's having a celebration.
I may, I may have to live, leave after the consent agenda and anything that may be pulled over, so I'll try to leave out as quietly as I possibly can.
We want you to leave out noiseily, so we'll miss you. Okay, so, does anybody on council want to remove any items from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I think I should read them first.
Oh, you're supposed to read them.
And then procedurally.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
All right, Mayor, the first item is amendments from February 4th, 2020 city council meeting, amendments from the February 25th, 2020 city council work session. Resolution 2017, awarding a bid for restoration of country music mural brick facade at the downtown center. Resolution 2018, authorizing entry into an agreement for restoration of the country music mural. Resolution 2019, awarding a bid for purchase of a new mobile stage unit for special events. Resolution 2020, authorizing the purchase of police vehicle equipment. Resolution 2021, authorizing the sale of surplus real property, unaddressed Robin Road property. Resolution 2022, accepting certain streets as city streets. Resolution 2023, awarding proposal for information technology penetration testing services. Resolution 2024, approving a grant contract amendment to the Tennessee Department of Transportation for utilization of federal highway administration funds for Bristol Metropolitan Planning Organization.
All right, now, would anyone on council like to have any items removed from the consent?
I would like to remove Resolution 2017, 18, and 19.
All right, anyone else? All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda without 2017, 2018, and 2019?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we're ready to vote. King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin? Yes. All right, so we have three resolutions removed, and Mr. Sora, if you want to talk to us, I think they're all related, and then we'll vote on them separately.
Yes, and while you're absolutely right, we can vote on them separately, and I'm going to ask our city attorney to weigh in on this. It might facilitate discussion if we suspend the rules and talk, they all cross-pollinate and very much related. So, rather than discussing them separately, to discuss them in context with each other. Okay, Resolution 2017 does award a bid for the restoration of the brick facade for the Country Music Museum. The low bid was submitted by Inland Construction Company of Abbotin, Virginia, in the amount of ninety-two thousand eight hundred dollars. Mr. Beavers is with here with us tonight and can speak to that, to that issue, and the options that you have there. Also, our city attorney is here and can speak to the ownership of the wall as her research has found. Resolution 2018 deals with the, an agreement to restore the country music mural. This is the actual painting of the mural. As council is aware, this is the artistic creation of Tim White signs of Blountville, Tennessee. So, he is a sole provider of this service or of this artistic work. The total payment to the artist will be in the amount of twenty-four thousand dollars. This does include all supplies, rental of equipment, and so forth, so that's an all-inclusive price for the restoration of the mural. The restoration of the mural would take place at the conclusion of any restoration work on the brick facade. And the last resolution to be considered in conjunction with all of the above is Resolution 2019, and this awards the bid for a new mobile stage unit, as council is aware and as per discussions. The stage that's there now, really, it impedes view of the mural, and it also impedes the work in restoring the mural. So, that would be removed. There's opportunity now to purchase a stage that would not be placed back at that location, but one that would be placed on one side or the other of the downtown center. I know during the Rhythm and Roots Festival, if you're situated on State Street facing downtown center, it's typically situated on the left side. It could also, there's ample space to go on the right side. But that bid would, is recommended to be awarded to Stage Line Mobile Stage, Inc., and this is a 20-by-24 stage in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand and forty dollars. And Mr. Napier's here and can address any questions regarding the replacement of the stage.
Okay, thank you. Questions for staff?
None necessarily is questions, I guess, of the reason of, my reason for pulling these, that, you know, and I've talked to staff, I've talked to people outside of staff that are familiar with this. You know, I probably, I think part of it is repainting, and you're losing part of the nostalgia on it, and also talking to people outside, that the paint is part of what causes the problems within the mortar, so that, and that we're spending basically one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars, one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars to repaint this wall, and ninety-two thousand to repoint a wall that really and truly is not, we do not own it a hundred percent. There's basically, it's owned in conjunction with, and of spending that kind of money, just, I just, I can't, I could possibly go with, I honestly believe of the fact of repainting the wall, I could probably go with that, this, I don't necessarily like even that of, I like the nostalgia of having the way the wall is now. It's been there for twenty years, but, and even, I pulled the stage because it is in conjunction with this, and I felt like that, and I think with the stage, if we are going to rent it out during Rhythm and Roots, or we're going to possibly use that instead of a donation to Rhythm and Roots, we've got some return, and this can be used, we could pull it to Anderson, or if somebody needs to rent it, as long as we have that, I can go along with that, but I just cannot imagine paying, spending one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars to repaint the mural, and that's why I pulled it. So, that's where I am, so.
Other discussion, and I assume no more question? Any further discussion? I guess we're discussing before we're taking voting, so we're still being a little more flexible.
Well, the rules are suspended, aren't they?
We didn't vote to suspend them, but I think with effective meetings, it's, I think we had consensus to suspend them.
And I understand your position, I do. I too went down and looked at the wall, and one part of, that's a greater, greatest concern for me are the end pieces and the way that there's such gross deterioration there that I look at it, you know, as a safety issue, not unlike our trees who had grown too tall and the limbs were falling. You know, we have a wall that we now know is compromised, and so that then provides, knowing that, that we have some liability in that.
Well, but really, it's not, I mean, as far as compromised of, I believe if Tim could maybe come, because, I mean, there's, I don't think there's any compromise, I mean, of the wall, that there is a, and that was one of my questions that I've asked, of is there a chance that this wall could fall, and do we have any liability, and of it being, if it is going, of that, would it not also be on the person that is the co-owner of the wall to help in the repair?
But to finish my thought is that, while it may not be at this particular point, it's that with, without repointing and without doing some addressing of this wall, it's only going to get worse. So, we can either spend this amount now, or as we all know, the cost of doing things like this is just increases. So, it's either you can pay for it now, or you can pay for it later, and what that's going to look like between now and later is my thought about the repointing, is that, I agree, ninety-two thousand dollars is a lot of money for that, but the wall will either have to be taken completely down at some point, or it will have to be repointed and addressed at some point. At some point, something will have to be done about the wall. Mr. Beavers?
Well, certainly, there's really two options. One, leave the wall like it is, as far as not talking about painting, just the wall itself. It's not an imminent danger of falling or compromised right now, where I would fear somebody getting hit in the head with a brick falling off of it. Certainly, it is deteriorating, as old walls do, old brick walls. That was an interior wall at some point, because there was a building on the side where the parking lot is now, so basically, you have an interior wall that has been painted over with a mural that is old, and it does get moisture in it behind it, so it is deteriorating now. Is that ten years, twenty years, thirty years, fifty years? Time will tell, but it will continue to get that moisture in there and deteriorate because it's an older wall. So, the "don't do anything with the wall" scenario is not meaning that it's going to fall on somebody soon or anytime. fall on somebody soon or anytime. It could be 50 years from now that somebody says, well, we need to work on that wall. I just don't know that timeframe. It will deteriorate how it's going to over that time. By repointing and putting pilisters and flashing on the top, you are providing a more stable wall that will have a longer lifespan than the current wall there. Now, what is the cost benefit there? When will they cross? Nobody knows that answer, because once again, the existing wall is going to deteriorate somewhat over time, but that could be in a long period of time, and, you know, probably past a lot of our lifetimes that are sitting here, before it would become to that point that you would have to do something drastic with the wall. So hopefully, that answered the questions there.
Yeah, that's right.
Has the co-owner of the wall been approached to participate in this in any way?
They haven't been approached as in anticipating them paying any cost toward that. They have been notified about looking at painting the mural and possibly working on the wall. Yes.
But not for?
Not, not cost-related. Correct.
Further questions or discussion?
Well, another point that I'd like to make is that this is the 20th anniversary of Rhythm and Roots, and it is iconic to our downtown, and visited Greenville, South Carolina almost two weeks ago now, I guess. And the murals of this nature, and we know this to be true of our mural, are, add to the destination oftentimes of people to travel. We provide outdoor concerts at this area. It's really our only open green space in Bristol, Tennessee downtown. And the aesthetic of it, we've talked a lot about infrastructure, but emotional infrastructure, we know, is now a big topic in cities, and its attraction and the type of people that are attracted to cities because of these types of art in public places. And so I think that's important. And I also think that the stage, the stage that's there, it does block a lot of it. And so my understanding is that the stage that we're looking at purchasing for city use could also be leased or rented out, which would give us a return on that investment. And so with new businesses opening downtown, with what we have in the Seventh Street block in Shelby, it's just going to solidify that as a cornerstone of our downtown, and will in and of itself become an attraction. So I'm going to vote for this. It's, it is a lot of money, but we have a very healthy reserve fund, and my understanding was that we could take this, these types of finances out to cover one-time restorations of this nature or purchases of this nature.
I'd like to add to the discussion, just that around our country, we're seeing that murals are very much in vogue, that communities are trying to figure out what kind of murals can go on their walls and where they can put them. Ours being iconic, I think it was 84, 1984, that it was first painted. I think it was probably one of the first things in our community beyond historical markers to celebrate us as the birthplace of country music. I think that's critical. Also, it has been repainted once before. And again, across our country, people are painting new murals or taking their old 1930s, 1940s advertising murals and painting those fresh to be able to celebrate. The, I really like the emotional infrastructure terminology. In addition to that, there's the sense of place that we really can celebrate here in our community, that a lot of people are looking for is places that feel good, feel different, have something special about them, and I think our mural helps with that. I would also say that the Civitan Club helped to put, I think, the initial stage and then a second stage, including the ADA ramp, et cetera. So I would encourage us to communicate with Civitan and thank them greatly for the 20 years of service or more provided with the current stage or the stage that preceded it, and just have a conversation with them if there's any interest of moving that stage or reusing the ramp or any parts that are able to be used from that. And for the mobile stage, just that we didn't have photos here tonight, but it's in a trailer and very, very movable and easy to, for, I think Terry shared with us, two people to set up and take down with hydraulic lifts, which is pretty cool and moving us into the 21st century. So appreciate that. So I will also be supporting these resolutions. Anybody else? Okay? If not, our attorney will take each of these separately. Is that correct?
I think that's probably, yes. You need to vote on each one separately.
All right.
You're back in the, in the rules.
Okay. We're back in the rules without having officially been out of the rules. Resolution 20-17, awarding the bid for the Country Music mural brick facade, restoration of it. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve Resolution 2017.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. A motion and a second. Further discussion? I'll just say, the painting that we had that's there now lasted 20 years, so if we repoint it and paint it and do a better job with it, it might last a lot longer than that. Okay. I think, yeah.
The only one thing I would like to add to it, I think it would have been prudent of us to have asked the co-owner if they would have, you know, co-shared that expense. And maybe we could still go back and ask for that.
Okay.
Not after you've agreed to do it by yourself. Why wouldn't they?
Maybe she'll surprise us.
All right. I think we're ready to vote.
King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
No.
Fire Robin?
Yes. All right. Thank you. Resolution 2018, agreeing for the, that's the painting of the mural. It also talks about restoration of the mural itself. Any further discussion or questions before, questions? Okay. Do I have a motion for the painting of the mural?
Okay. Motion to approve the painting of the murals. That is Resolution 2018.
And a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. We're ready to vote.
King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
No.
Fire Robin?
Yes. All right. Now, awarding a bid for purchase of a new mobile stage unit, Resolution 2019.
Motion to approve Resolution 2019.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. We're ready to vote.
King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes. All right. Now, we, let's see, we've already approved the consent agenda. You have a great celebration, Chad. So for the next part of our agenda, before we have our Board of Education liaison report, but you can go ahead and begin now, I wanted to recognize, sometimes I fail to do this, Mayor Joel Staton and Peg in the back, and Mayor Staton's still part of Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals also. Here earlier, but scooted out, was Tanya Kestner, who's our new, still new, executive director of our library, and I know we're going to hear more from her and the library in the future. So appreciate her being here tonight. And now we have Dr. Annette Tudor, who's going to give our Board of Education Liaison Report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to say thank you for Navy Week. We have at least two schools that I'm aware of that are participating in events on that week, so we appreciate that opportunity. Thank you all, council members, and Mr. Sora, for your patience with our strategic planning process, as well as the school tours. I appreciate you working with us to reschedule those. I'll be in touch with Mr. Sora soon to reschedule both of those events and give you ample opportunity to provide, when you're available, for both of those things, and who can help with our strategic planning process, and then also school tours for all of you based on your availability. Thank you, Mayor Fire Robin, for participating in Read Across America at Avoca. That was last Friday. Those events are continuing at all of our elementary schools through this week as well, so that's an exciting time celebrating Dr. Seuss's birthday.
We expected you to have a hat on.
I know. I had a shirt. That's about all I could pull off. You didn't have a hat either, Mayor.
Touche.
We're also kicking off our first Be Present attendance challenge. If you recall that event from last year, it was a big hit and success in our school district in raising our awareness of attendance and the importance of coming to school. We have delayed that a couple of times due to cold and flu season, and so we are in the process of, we're in a two-week review, and Friday is when we recognize the school who has had the greatest increase over last year in their attendance for this two-week period of time. So we're excited to recognize that school, and that remains to be seen who that will be. And then, I know that we've insinuated to you that we have some early college experiences that were happening. I'm proud to announce that we have a partnership with Northeast State and Tusculum University to provide early college for our high school students. Our rising juniors have started that registration process, and so we have students who are interested in those cohorts. Those students who finish that over the course of the next two years will graduate high school with an associate's degree, as well as their high school diploma at the same time. So that's sort of unprecedented, certainly in our area. So we're very excited about that and very appreciative of both Tusculum University and Northeast State providing those opportunities for our students. That's all I have for you. Do you have any questions for me?
All right. Thank you very much. Next, we have our city manager's report.
Just a couple of items, Mayor. Just remind you of your work session on Tuesday, March 24th at 11:00 a.m. in the Annex. And then also that week, on Thursday, March 26th, at 8:00 a.m. in the Annex, we'll have our comprehensive plan presentation. I know you'll, you want to, you want to be present for that. Also, we'll make council aware, we're still trying to arrange a date for Discover Bristol to make their presentation. They are going to go ahead with, if you recall, a polled council, maybe 10 days ago regarding, electronically, regarding the potential of a March 13th date for a joint presentation with Bristol, Virginia. And we had three members of council that couldn't, three of our five had a conflict that day. Discover Bristol will go ahead with Bristol, Virginia's presentation. They had made arrangements to have an individual with Virginia Tourism there to co-present with them. They are still working on a, on a date for Bristol, Tennessee. They do desire to have Tennessee Tourism participate in that. So once we get some dates, that they will be available to co-present with Discover Bristol, then I'll get back with you on a, on a date. You are invited to the, if you are available, to attend this Friday, March 13th, and hear the presentation and Virginia Tourism's input into that.
What time is that?
It's at noon. It's at noon?
Thanks.
And I'm, I'm assuming it's going to be at the chamber, but I'm not, I'll need to get back with that. It may well be in Bristol, Virginia council chambers. Also, at this time, I'd like to ask Mary Lee to approach the podium. We're very excited about, about the, our employee giving this year for United Way, and the city of Bristol was, Bristol, Tennessee, was recognized in a way that I'm not aware we've been recognized before for contributions to United Way. Mary Lee?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Always love an opportunity to brag on our city and our employees. As many of you are aware, the United Way of Bristol held its annual meeting last week on February 27th. And as Mr. Sora stated, the city of Bristol was recognized in two different manners. One is that the city received a communion, community champion award, and that is the recognition of the top 15 organization givings. And actually, the city placed third in its organizational giving, so we're very proud of that. And you might say, well, you know, it's not heard of us being in that ranking before, and how did that happen? And I think that leads to the second recognition that we received. There were four organizations that were recognized last week with the Campaign Chairman's Award, and we received this plaque, and I think it's well-stated here, the United Way of Bristol, and this is the 2019-2020 Campaign Chairman's Award for the city of Bristol, Tennessee, presented to the employees of the organization with a notable increase in giving. So our employees really stepped up this campaign year. Our employee contributions increased over $6,200, and with an additional 43 employees giving. So a notable increase. We received this award and wanted to share that with council at the city council meeting tonight. And want to give a special thanks to Donna Huskins, who is our HR generalist. She serves as our campaign chairperson that works with the city and the employees, and also the department coordinators that worked to achieve this. Thank you.
Great.
I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good.
All right. So council comments. You're good?
Yeah.
No baseball updates?
I just have a few things. Thank you to our Navy for being here for Navy Week at BMS. That will be a huge addition. Thank you. The sign downtown, the mural downtown, it speaks to downtown vitality. It is a source of economic development. And while I am not thrilled with the cost, I am thrilled with the fact that this will take place. Census, March 12th is so important because so much of our funding, as he explained, does count on that. It also affects other finances that come to us. The BCM will have a huge announcement March 10th related to a special activity that they've got, so I hope everybody will tune in March the 10th. And I'd like to compliment the Department of Community Relations and the wonderful work that they've done on our website. I've been keeping up with it as it's unfolded, and the fact that, that our community calendar, it's something that our community has asked for, for years, and we haven't had a comprehensive community calendar. I know we don't have one just yet, but it's something to aspire to. And the color, the vibrancy of the website, it's very catching. Greatly appreciate that. And in this time of the Lenten season, we have had some, some different conversations throughout our community that have sometimes gone, gone well. Everyone has been well behaved, but I think that there's an element of grace for one another that at times has been missing. I myself strive on a daily basis to, to, to approach things from a position of grace, and I know I fall short. But I would hope that we, as a community, will continue to move forward from a position of grace and grace for one another, grace for our leaders, grace for our staff members, and for our school board and our school administration. Grace is something that we can never give too much of to one another, and I hope to be better myself.
Thank you. I also have several things. I wanted to thank our community development office and our schools for recycling video that, when I looked at it two and a half weeks ago, there were over 3,000 views. And I can tell you that is partly the quality of the video that we did, but it's the kids who were great with giving us instructions on what, what to do with our recycling here in Bristol and to promote that Bristol loves recycling. So if you haven't seen it, I encourage you to go look at that YouTube. The kids are great and really appreciate the effort with the campaign that our department has put together and different aspects of our community with that. So really appreciate it. Again, just reminder of census, keep that in mind. Coronavirus with people being concerned. This week, Ballard will be talking with community leaders for what their role and how they approach it and process, along with our health departments, both in partnership with Ballard, and then our Sullivan County Health Department is having an additional meeting. So people are paying attention. They're on top of it. They're going to share with departments, both in partnership with Ballad, and then our Sullivan County Health Department is having an additional meeting. So people are paying attention, they're on top of it, they're going to share with us what some of the processes are, and what processes might be, start now, may change as things go along, as more things are available, et cetera. And I know everybody's listening to the news, and the things that are being promoted, or washing hands, and don't touch your face, and I don't know about y'all, but as soon as you say, "Don't touch your face," my nose itches, and I can't not touch my face. But anyway, trying not to do that. Also, avoiding, we're trying to do the bumps, instead of the hand shaking as much, and remind people the last several years, we've been promoting the elbow coughing, instead of into your hands, which I think is just awesome, and why didn't we think of that before? So don't touch somebody's elbow, but anyway, I think that's a really good habit to try to get into. Our community is having a poverty simulation on March 12th, with Lead Bristol from the Chamber is, has taken that on annually, and open to the public, so we encourage other folks to participate and contact United Way if you're interested. And it's to experience for a few hours what it may feel like to be in poverty. Treekeepers is March 14th, and I think that's become a pretty popular event the last several years. It's at Steel Creek Park, learning how to care for trees. Also, we'll say that this is coming up the 50th anniversary of Earth Day, and Friends of Steel Creek have kind of taken on coordinating the community events. All kinds of different organizations have come to the table, and trying to get a calendar that'll list all those, all those activities during the month of April, and particularly the week of Earth Day's 50th celebration. And suffrage things are being organized as well, community-wide, and the YWCA is heading that up, and it'll have a lot of different things, a few things have already happened, but we're excited to celebrate that as well. I think that's it for my different announcements, and appreciate everybody, and hope to stay safe and well during this season, so appreciate you all. Thank you, next month, we're adjourned.